Good evening and welcome everyone to the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 15th, 2016. Welcome to everyone that's here in the council chambers and all those that are watching from around the world. You're always welcome. We did have a special meeting just prior to this to interview applicants for the opening on our zoning and design review board. We will be tabulating, the town clerk is tabulating those right now and we'll be recognizing the appointee later in our agenda. Go ahead and call to order our regular meeting for tonight and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Muller?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant of God, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is adoption of our agenda for tonight. I am not aware of any changes. Is there a motion?
No, I'd like to pull, I'd like to...
We could do that when we actually get to the consent item.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I make a motion, we adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And just as a reminder, Michelle, we will be pulling item 9B from consent when we get to that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
Thank you.
We do have proclamations and recognition of our Yountville Go Green team for all the wonderful work that was done. I see that they're well represented here tonight. Thank you very much. I will invite our Go Green representative, Councilmember Doran Becker, if she would like to just say a word or two about the efforts since you were a part of it.
Well, it was one of the highlights of my year, working with you all. I guess we met over 14 months, so it was longer than a year. And we went through a lot of very interesting information and preparation for our outreach to the community, which I so thank you all. I was so thrilled with the five residents who stepped up and you guys just blew my mind. You were so great. So, thank you so very much for all of your efforts and your work on this and I'm very proud that we got that done. And I'm, I don't, you probably know, but if you, in case you don't, Christine O'Rourke will be helping us with our general plan as well. And we were all very impressed with the work that Christine did with our Go Green team. So, I think we did a good job and it's in the books now.
There's a minor detail of us actually acting on that contract later in the agenda for Christine, but everything else you said, I'm totally comfortable with.
Yeah.
So, I think, I'd like to invite Sherri Brightigan, Billy Hewitt, and Jenna Claire Gottsch all together to come up and join me at the podium. I kind of like the idea of doing this in one large group effort instead of individually.
Richard, was there a...
Yeah, well, don't worry Billy, we've got it all covered. I can't bring that many bottles of wine down at once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
That's beautiful. That means so much.
What I would like to also do, and Billy, I'm going to use yours as my script. That's Billy. This would be, this is for you. I'll make sure that's correct for you. So, actually, if you could just maybe shift over just a little bit more so I can get in the microphone and not turn my back on any of you. Don't go away too far, Sherri.
No, that's right.
And why not, Richard Hall? I have nothing for you, but come on, stand up, you're next to it.
I'm here to support my Go Green...
I know, you're going to support him from there.
I will do it.
And your fellow councilmembers are going to support him from all the way over there. But your certificate says they read certificates of appreciation. In recognition of contributions to the town of Yountville by the three of you, the town council and staff express a sincere thank you for your contributions and service to the town of Yountville as a member of the Yountville Go Green team presented today, November 15th, 2016. So... And so, I think you were taking pictures, right? I think we should have you all open up your certificate folders and pose for a photo. Oh, and Joe's over here, so, yeah, I'll come over here.
We got ballots, we get the mail, it's...
Everybody look at Joe.
One, two, three, Go Green.
Sherri, Go Green.
Go Green.
That's it, say Go Green, that works.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome, thank you.
You know what? If any of you would like to make a comment, feel free.
This is the briefest comment. Is this microphone on?
Yes.
I just want to thank the city leaders for being, for stepping forward and thinking ahead and having a volunteer group like the Go Green team, so, thank you all.
It was a pleasure. I really enjoyed working with everybody and I'm really grateful to live in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a special thanks to Marita and Richard, who represented the council. And, Marita, you were great for our Jeopardy game.
So, hope we'll have more as we go forward because everybody enjoyed that. Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to recognize Davio Santos and Alyssa Wickstrom, who are unable to join us tonight, but we have their recognition as well for all the time and effort that they put into it with all of you, so thank you very much. If you could just pass those over to Michelle. I would appreciate that. Thank you. We are going to move ahead now to public comment. Any item that's not on tonight's agenda, feel free. Yes, Mr. Knight?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I came out tonight because I, this weekend was the first opportunity I had to start reading LAFCO's, their Municipal Service Review and Sphere of Influence Report. It's like over 200 pages. And so, it's a, you know, complex report and very interesting, but what concerns me in reading through it is that this report, the public notice from the report says that there's a written public comment period that ends December 9th. And I haven't seen anywhere in terms of looking on the town's website, any information alerting the community about the LAFCO draft report and the fact that there's a draft hearing the day, I guess before, the next council meeting on December 6th. So, I was hoping the town would take an opportunity to put the information, put a public release out for the press and so the community can get a chance to look at the report. It's an interesting report. I mean, I know it goes through all our services that we do, our financing. What obviously concerns me is the Sphere of Influence part of it, where the town has taken steps in the last year or so to encourage LAFCO to support a Sphere of Influence adoption for the domain property that's, you know, to the west of us. And I have concerns about that. I've only had an opportunity initially to read LAFCO's report, but I hope the whole community has an opportunity to read that report and to provide public comment before December 9th on their concerns about potential annexation or at least LAFCO taking a positive position or a position for or against that Sphere of Influence request. So, thank you very much and I'm sorry I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Steve. I've been trying to have an opportunity to talk also with Councilmember Muller and with all of you, but hopefully in the next month or month and a half, we'll get a chance to talk about it after, at least I've had an opportunity to get through the report. So, thank you.
And I would just tell you, I think it's 297 pages.
Or definitely over 200.
And what you may want to do is jump to chapter 7.
That's what I have. I've done, I read that part initially and so I will hopefully get, I will get a written comment back to LAFCO before December 9th, so, thank you.
And just to, not to get into too much of a dialogue, just to be, to clarify one point and then I want to ask Steve if he could give just a quick update on the December 6th meeting and the status of the draft report and review. There is no request pending for annexation. So, you mentioned the annexation of domain. That might be what people hear. There's no request that the town has put forward. There has been a request for consideration of a Sphere of Influence change, which is not the same thing. So, just to clarify that. But Steve, if you could just explain where we stand on that draft report?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to echo is, for those of you that do have the time to read the 297 pages, the town has some serious concerns about some of the content and we're currently working with LAFCO staff and we've requested that they consider a time delay to allow us to meet with them, to work out some of the concerns that we have on that. We're anticipating to hear tomorrow and if that's the case, that particular item could be continued. If not, town staff has been working with our ad hoc committee and we will have a very detailed response. But right now, we're trying to work with staff and LAFCO to make the process a little less cumbersome. As Mr. Knight alluded to, it is a very wordy and detailed document, but it's important to the town's future that we get it right. So, we're trying to reach out to LAFCO staff, work with them to make sure that the document that is presented to the public. I also want to clarify that it is LAFCO's document that happens to involve the town of Yountville. So, the policymaking body that takes the action is the LAFCO board, not the town council. We're obviously working and I also think it's correct, as the mayor has alluded to, one of the things they look at is the municipality's capacity to deliver services and also the appropriate sphere of influence. We are the only incorporated community that does not have a sphere of influence larger than our incorporated boundary and we provide municipal services to domain and then that's been a question and we're looking at that. And I do think there's been a lot of misrepresentation of what the town is seeking when people talk about annexation. We're not talking about annexation. We are talking about having an area that we deliver municipal services be evaluated as to whether that should be included in our sphere of influence and that's all the policy statements. And in fact, this town council took action to your general plan policy updates to actually further protect and limit future growth and I think that's something that we just have to always, it is a topic and I think in some cases it's significant. We certainly would encourage everybody that has a concern to participate in the process and do exactly as Mr. Knight's talking about, which is to send their concerns to LAFCO and/or if they want to talk to us, we'd certainly be happy to talk with them, but their position or comment they want to make to LAFCO may be different than something that the town is taking a position on as well.
And just getting back to your initial comment, I think we could potentially help LAFCO because LAFCO is obligated to be outreach to the public. We can certainly add to that outreach and even highlight, like I have done, about finding the focus because it's really challenging to read almost 300 pages of data analysis so that we could encourage, the summary basically of chapter 7 could give people a lot of the information that they're probably looking for, but we could also make sure there's a link available on our website and even talk to Yountville Sun about making sure that that's made available and aware.
And I think Sandra and I can look at putting a link on that document to our planning and building department website.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for bringing that forward. Any other public comments? Not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to our consent calendar and as Councilmember Durham alluded to earlier, we're going to pull item 9B for discussion and consideration separate from the consent calendar. So, unless there's anything else that councilmember is asking to pull, I'll invite motion and action on items 9A, C, and D.
I also move that we approve the consent calendar with items 9A, C, and D.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And before we go to 9B, I do want to just mention, as it relates to the Napa City Selection Committee appointments in 9A, there are, and since we just talked about LAFCO, I'm not sure we're going to get back to that topic. So, folks are aware, there will be two seats that change on LAFCO's board and a possible third based on the elections. Supervisor Luce and St. Helena Councilmember Greg Pitts are both no longer going to be serving on that board because of the election results. And the American Canyon City Councilmember Joan Bennett's final tally is not yet known, so we don't know if she's going to still be on LAFCO or not. I bring that up based on item 9A because I am chairing the Napa City Selection Committee and we will be choosing an alternate for the Marin Clean Energy Board of Directors that has tentatively been set as the committee chair, so that would be, that would be me as the representative. But we will also be, as a city selection committee, at an upcoming meeting addressing the openings on LAFCO because that city selection committee does appoint those members. So, this is kind of the only related topic, so I want to bring that up here. Okay, item 9B, that's been pulled. The authorization and approval of a professional services agreement with Christine O'Rourke for the general plan update assistance as stated here. Councilmember Durham, would you like to address your concerns or thoughts about this item?
Yes, thank you. And it's definitely thoughts, not concerns. A lot of my office hours are spent talking about the general plan update as well as money being spent in Yountville. So, when I saw this item, I just wanted it to be pulled just so it wasn't passed over so that all of the population of Yountville understands the process that we're going through and understands the steps that we're in now. After seeing this, I had contacted former Vice Mayor Hall, Nathan Still. I'd also talked to the town manager through emails and at the end of it, was very positive about the process that we're starting and going forward with. I know there was some concern when, at my office hours yesterday, about 84,000 for Christine and then also additional money spent for another consultant as well, which after talking to Nathan and the planning department, I was a lot more comfortable with. But I was hoping that we could just spend a minute or two minutes just explaining why those are on there and so everybody in the town moves forward as confident as I am.
Great. So, as you know, with these two consent calendar items, we're starting to assemble our team for the general plan update and we've looked at different models in bringing this team together, looking at the larger corporate firms versus assembling individual members with specialties to provide those elements. And the ultimate numbers are very competitive with one another. What we like about choosing these individual specialties is that this document will be better adapted to Yountville. The policies will be uniquely ours versus more boilerplate and corporate. And also by assembling these different members, we can keep the project moving forward more quickly. We have an 18-month targeted timeline and these different members allow us to achieve that. So, with the two that are on the consent calendar tonight, we're at 244,000 of a budget that we have pulled aside of 600,000. So, we're being very conscious of how we're spending that money, but these are just the first two consultants.
I don't know if, see, Nathan isn't here, but I'll add something to that because we did, Vice Mayor and I, as the ad hoc members on this general plan update committee, also with a couple of members of our ZDRB, have already had a preliminary conversation with staff and with some of the consultants that are, have been, were tentatively presented and tonight are going to be officially presented to us. There were others that were interviewed by staff that got us to the recommendations we're at tonight. Often people will see us interviewing multiple consultants or vendors about something staff has handled that on a preliminary basis have brought forward their recommendations to us and we further evaluated those as an ad hoc group and have, I have a very comfortable and total confidence in both of the recommendations that we are discussing tonight. They gave a very compelling, as you mentioned, an 18-month plan and we certainly push them about how realistic is that because it's not just the cost of it, but it's the time commitment. Having a project manager for this project, I think is also going to be critical. There's a reason that communities don't do this for 20-plus years is because nobody has staff that can dedicate the time it takes to analyze, evaluate, and then in some cases rewrite general plans. So, I think our staff has done a great job of setting us up for success and that does cost money. It does allow our staff to do their daily jobs, which is also critical, that we can't just put the town on hold for a year and a half and focus all of our efforts on this. So, I'm certainly supportive. Councilmember Doran Becker already talked about some of the very positive history we have with this consultant in particular and her familiarity with our community, which is one of the driving factors in her selection or recommendation anyway. So, that gives a little, I think, a little bit more background to how we got to this point. Vice Mayor?
I would just also like to add that we've been at least talking about this and I want to talk about the general plan in general terms, but that's the best word I can think of at the moment. And we've also been putting money aside to pay for it. We've been doing this for, I would say, at least a couple of years, if not even longer. And I think we should all be proud that in most places, they decide to do this and then go worry about the money, but we've had a lot of foresight thinking about this and I would say that off the top of my head, over 70, 75% of the funds, we've already earmarked. They're already in our budget. They're not to be budgeted and I think that that is something the public should also know too, that we have been talking about this and putting money aside ahead of starting it, so.
One other thing, just to expand upon that, and yes, you are correct, the 600,000 in the budget is fully funded and in looking at, moving forward. A significant component that the council's asked for us to work on at a staff level is to make sure that we have a good process for public education and public engagement and that's one of the reasons we're taking this approach. We will be starting with a speaker series and developing information and we don't want to talk too much about this because Sandra actually has a really cool item on the, but we're kind of leapfrogging and I get all excited about this because this is where I get to be geeky on doing something. So, I just want the audience to know, if they just stay tuned for about 20 minutes, Sandra will give a much more detail about where we're going. But what I will share is that we do have some additional consultants that will be coming onboard with specific programs and tasks within that $600,000 budget.
And just one last thing I want to mention, unfortunately, there is a neighboring jurisdiction that has had a very negative experience by doing it a different way. And we are very conscious of not only protecting our financial investment in this, but trying to be very diligent and deliberate in the process and the foundation is critical to set correctly so that everything else falls into place going forward. Unfortunately, they didn't have the same experience and we see how difficult that can be with the loss of resources as well as a significant loss of time. So, we feel very confident that we are able to kind of learn from that experience and be even more confident in how we're going to go forward. And as Steve just said, Sandra's going to tell us a little bit more about the details in just a few minutes, if I could stop talking. Okay, with that, Councilmember Doran Becker?
I'm sorry, I was just wondering if there was going to be public comment?
Yeah, I was going to get back to the actual item that we were presenting rather than me going on and on. Yes. With that, if there was no other concerns from Councilmember Durham?
And that's exactly why I wanted to just have a discussion on this, just to clarify those points, so that's, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, if anyone's here tonight that would like to comment on this item, you're welcome to do so. Yes?
Carla Rife, R-E-Y-F-F, two F's and two francs. And I'm glad that you brought this up and I see that it's listed on there as 84,000 and then I heard the figure 600,000 thrown around, but that 600,000 is only 75% of the total cost and I was wondering what the total cost is anticipated to be.
And if you can wait for about 15 minutes, Sandra's going to help fill in...
Oh, this Sandra here?
Yes, a lot of the details. Yes. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no other ones, I'll invite action on this item.
Mayor, prior to action, could I announce the clarification and correction or amendment to the contract for the record?
Oh, yes, I did forget about that, yes.
Thank you. Item, page 8 of the professional service agreement, section 12.3, has been modified to reduce the amount of aggregate professional liability insurance from 2 million to 1 million based on coverage in the consultant's existing policy. And that change has been presented to you at the dais and is included in the public binder.
And just a note of clarification, you said that you had our town attorney look at that too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add? So, any action will be on the revised...
Yes, please.
...agreement as presented. Any other comments from staff or, I mean, council, as I'm looking at, is there a motion?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar item B.
As amended?
As amended, sir, thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you for reminding us about the amended agreement.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate that. Sitting here right in front of me.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to, let's see, item 10 presentations. We've kind of taken care of all that. No public hearings, we're going to get right to our first administrative regular item, Veterans Memorial Park Art Sculpture Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is to appoint the Yountville residents to serve on the Veterans Memorial Park Art Sculpture Ad Hoc Committee. Back in August of this year, the council met with the Yountville Arts Commission and they established this committee which consisted of nine members, two from the town council, two from the Yountville Arts Commission, two from Park and Rec Advisory Commission, and then the three residents, two of which were to be veterans. Since that meeting, Mayor Dunbar and Councilmember Doran Becker have been appointed to represent the town council. Dee Heiser and Jim McDonald from Yountville Arts Commission and Verlin Chalmers and Mark Haugen are representing P-RAC. At the conclusion of the meeting, when we established the committee council, made a determination that the interview process would be determined based on the number of applications received. So, we are bringing this staff report back tonight to ask how council would like to proceed with appointment, which would either be to waive the protocols and appoint based on applications submitted and/or direct staff to schedule interviews at a council meeting at a future date. The applications that we've received are from Robert Thompson, Edwin Warren, and Sharon Damato. We did our typical notice of vacancy. We did advertise in the Sun for a paid advertisement. The first notice of vacancy, we received one application from Robert Thompson. Then we had to extend the notice and that's when we received our second application from Edwin Warren. And then following the close of the filing period, we received an application from Sharon Damato and there was some confusion as to whether or not she could qualify for that and after speaking with our Park and Rec Director, she learned that she is able to and she submitted her application and it was subsequent to me pushing out the agenda to you all. So, before you were here to ask for your, either to appoint the three members that applied and/or direct me to schedule interviews.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of the staff report? Okay. Any members of the public like to talk about this before we talk about this? Okay, seeing none. So, we're being asked to either accept these three applications for the vacancies or come up with something else. Any thoughts? Vice Mayor?
I'm thrilled we have three applicants and they all live at the veterans home and this sculpture is going in a park to honor them. So, I think there's a, seems to be well-qualified applicants from what I can tell. Sharon Damato, even though she's not, she's a home resident, but she's not a veteran herself, she's very, very involved in the arts committee up there, so I think that gives her a lot of qualifications. Mr. Thompson and Warren, I think they're also very involved in the veterans home and will be very helpful. And, you know, it's just great that we've decided that we really want our veterans to participate in this and they have. It would just make my job harder if I had six applicants. I mean, I'm thrilled that we have three openings and we have three people that have applied and we don't have to, you know, not let somebody be on the committee. So, I'm fine with selecting all three to be on the Art Sculpture Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I concur.
Okay. I'll just say also that any members of the public that may kind of get engaged as this process moves forward are still invited to participate. This is just...
I concur.
Okay. I'll just say also that any members of the public that may kind of get engaged as this process moves forward are still invited to participate. This is just formalizing the subcommittee. And, you know, there's still public meetings that people are invited to attend. These folks are just saying that they are willing and able to commit to a structured time and evaluation process that will help vet some of the sculpture concepts as they come forward. So with that, is there a motion to accept the three applications as presented?
I'm...
Can it be to waive the protocols and appoint the three?
Yes.
Waive the protocols and appoint the three?
Yes, please.
Yes, it can be.
And I move that we do that.
Thank you.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you to all of our applicants, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Warren, and Ms. Damato. Welcome to the Ad-Hoc Art Sculpture Committee. Thank you. Next up, since we're assigning people to all kinds of stuff tonight, we're going to move on to our zoning and design review board appointment, as I believe we're about to hear from our town clerk. We did meet earlier, and I'll let you do the rest.
Yes, we did. Thank you, Mayor. We are recruiting for one position on the zoning and design review board to fill an unexpired term. Carrie Dorman, since she was nominated and appointed to serve on council effective December 6, we wanted to get ahead of that and get the person appointed, because the planning department has a lot of work they're trying to get through. And we conducted interviews earlier, and we interviewed Jared Denton and Liz Hauer. And council ballots determined that Jared Denton was the first choice, and Liz Hauer was the second choice. So if there are no further questions, I would ask that you move to appoint council's first choice, Jared Denton.
Okay. Is there any further...
So moved.
Well, I'm going to ask if there's any further discussion by council based on the recommendation. Any members of the public like to comment? Councilmember Dornbecker?
So moved.
I second.
So let's just make it clear that you're moving that Jared Denton be appointed to the vacancy of the ZDRB?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got the name out there, so on the record, it was clear. And the second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much to both Liz Hauer and Jared Denton for stepping up and being willing to participate. And we welcome Mr. Denton back onto the zoning and design review board. Thank you.
It's not this one.
We're going to move on to staff informational reports now, and the aforementioned and long-anticipated Veterans Memorial Park interpretive panel update.
I'm filling in for Samantha, who's caring for a...
Can you hit "view"?
...sick child tonight. But tonight, before you, continuing the theme on working with the update on Veterans Memorial Park, part of the emphasis that the council previously had asked us to work on was a historical panel explaining the relationship between this space that we call Veterans Memorial Park in Yountville and the California Veterans Home. In your staff packet, you saw the vernacular and the language that a working committee of many people have been helping and validating. What we also have now to show you is some color renderings, first thing, and two size. So I'm kind of looking for feedback, general direction. We're looking at two size. One would be the 18 by 24, and it would be in this format. And then the second one is 18 by 36. It's the same information. It's just presented on the panels a little differently. And in the staff report, you'll note that there's a sample of how this will be installed in the park. So this gives you a better finished look of where and how the color will be used to make it a more graphic. What I think's really interesting is it does tell that story, I think, nicely done about the historical reference relationship, and also the uniqueness of how we, how the town came to have and own the park. I will point out that the initial sizing, when they pulled this, there's some hyphenation that we will correct, because I just want to say they, there are a couple in there from this point. But there's some feedback that we're looking for is, you know, you had asked that we bring this back to make sure that you were comfortable with it. Our goal now will be to fine-tune this and to go to fabrication so that it can be installed in the park. So with that, I'm asking for size feedback, general nature. If there's any concerns, are we on the right track?
Comments, thoughts? Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I just wanted to confirm that, despite the fact that the 18 by 24 looks larger because of the way, this page, 18 by 36 is the larger size.
Correct. That, you are correct. It's just, it fills the paper, and that's why I'm saying it's...
Right. I understand.
This gives you a better perspective on screen of how it would look in the larger format. So it's just a question, is there a preference that the council might have? And we will take your guidance and direction on that.
Other comments? Seeing no one else come forward right away, what I will say is, is this meant to be a one, one continuous script read throughout from start to finish? Or is it meant to have four separate blocks of information that can be read individually? Because to me, it doesn't present as a flowing text. When you read the upper-left square, you don't really know where to go next. If it's meant for it to be one continuous story, then I have a bit of a problem with the way this is designed.
I would say it's meant to read from top and then flowing. But it's, each of the segments is a segment on itself, and I think collectively. So if there's, you know, the first part, then the second part, third, and the fourth is the most current. So I do think there's a flow, but...
I would have made that comment prior to now, but this is the first we're seeing this?
No, this is...
What you sent us in the staff report was very different than this.
It is, right. The language, this is, this is showing it how it can be mocked up on the panel. And the lang, the first one was the elements that we were putting into. So we've continued to work beyond the agenda deadline. So, you know, the short answer, I think, Mayor, is that the boxes kind of go with each other, and that they are meant to capture and make it a little more inviting to look at and read. But if there's something that there's a stronger consensus on, I'll try and work on with that.
Well, so one of my points is, the images, it's hard to know to what text they are connected. Until, I mean, okay, you might read, okay, Lieutenant Colonel Enos Woods. The assumption can be made that's Lieutenant Colonel Woods in that picture. But nowhere does it say that. It just says "photo courtesy of the Veterans Home." It doesn't identify...
A caption, a caption of the picture would be helpful.
None of the photos are identified, is my point.
No, we can do that. We can add captions.
It can be done without a caption. It can be done with an arrow, or it could be done with the way the text flows around the image. But to me, this, the way this is laid out, and this is me having done layout for 24 years, it's disjointed and doesn't flow correctly. Now, it might be a different question than you're asking us tonight. If we can decide as a council that we want one size over the other, and all these elements and all this text make sense, and we're good with that, I would be happy to work with staff on some of my design concerns that are a little bit less important than the overall content and the size of the panel. So with those comments, thoughts from the council on what I just brought up? Vice Mayor?
I agree. I think it's, I don't know, my thoughts are, it's kind of, some, it's kind of fancy for fancy's sake. And you got too many different colors. I'm, I think most troubled by the discontinuity of the size of the photographs. It almost gives emphasis to a larger photo than a smaller photo. And I definitely think it needs some professional design work. This just doesn't really connect the story, I don't think, in the right way. I think that the words are minimal enough that keeping something simple and clear for the reader is probably better than trying to make something snazzy when it doesn't really need to be.
Look, maybe, I want to break this into a couple of things. One, can we speak to the content? Is the council comfortable with the content as it's presented, or would they like to see different content? Because that's kind of a fundamental question. This is history of, of the town and the land. Is it an appropriate representation of the park as Veterans Memorial Park? And if the answer's yes, then the content's good. Then we just have to talk about the size of the panel and how it's laid out. But if it's not the way we feel like the story should be told, then we need to decide that also. So does anyone have any thoughts for or against the content as it's presented?
I thought the content, you know, made sense. It flowed. It took it from the earliest, you know, establishment of the Veterans Home and that, how that parcel was given to the town. And I thought it was, it was wonderful, actually. The content.
Councilmember Durham?
I think the written word is fine. I'm not sure why the photos were chosen, specifically the railroad station. But I get the old Veterans Home, maybe a better representation of Yountville. But I think the word content itself is an interesting story and tells the story of why the park's there, and here's the backstory behind it.
Vice Mayor?
Of course, I like it.
I'm also just wondering, is Lieutenant Colonel Woods the kind of iconic representation of the home?
There's multiple. I mean, that's the problem when you have a property...
So why was he chosen over, say...
He was the first.
Holderman?
I'm just saying.
Who was the administrator?
That's the question. And the home historian and librarian were involved. And we could put multiple, but the reason he was selected was he was the first. So I mean, I'm just saying, that's where that came from. Holdermans could certainly be included, but I'm just saying...
I mean, the hospital was named after Colonel Holderman.
Right. The hospital was.
I think that people, people probably are more identifiable with the home and his name, but that's not necessarily the appropriate name. I'm just asking a question.
I'm just saying, you, I mean, I'm just saying, the, because like I say, let me, we consulted with them. I want to make sure, yes, Jennifer Allen, who's the Veterans Home Historical Librarian, Megan Jones with the Napa Historical Society, Margie, and a handful of others to get the facts correct on that. So that, and a lot of that is coming from the Veterans Home library and in terms of the factual history of the...
So it was really about, again, yeah, just telling something new and different, in a way, was a bit of the emphasis, you know, trying to find photos that really haven't been seen and talk about the first, the beginning of how the land really came to be, and then transitioned through how it became a separate parcel from the Veterans Home and deeded to the town. So the pictures are definitely just supportive of the text and something to be seen as something that really hasn't been shown to the public over and over was a little bit. The, I do think because the Railroad Depot was just a representation of showing, because you can still, we still have the Railroad Depot in town now. That's where Overland Chief is. And we can see that the railroad tracks there have now officially been moved to the west side. So it really just tells the story of that railroad track. But I think because it's so large, it overemphasizes the point that it's just trying to be supportive of, of the text to tell that story. So...
Okay. I would look at, I'll just break down the content, because I think some of it's less appropriate for the park. It's more about the history of the Veterans Home, which doesn't necessarily, to me, need to be stated in the park. The first paragraph makes sense because it has to do with how the, the 900-plus acres came to be Veterans, the Veterans Home. The first half of the next paragraph, I don't think, has anything to do with Veterans Memorial Park. It talks about the commander's, the Commodons' residence on the Veterans Home. And then there's a picture of that, neither of which do I find appropriate for the park.
Well, let me just, the, the first building was actually not just his home. It was also the, the hospital. It was the library. It was their residence until they built two separate buildings. It was the home at the time. That was...
I understand that.
It was all, all of the above, and even the mess hall.
But that, to me, talks about the Veterans Home campus, not Veterans Memorial Park. And so that's why I don't feel like it's, it's appropriate here. I think the most appropriate text is the second-to-last paragraph. That talks specifically about the parcel that became the park and how it became the park. I, you know, the part, the paragraph before that, about in 1959, the bypass, explains why the Veterans Home is on the other side of Highway 29. I think that makes sense also. It connects the bridge, literally and figuratively. So I get the last three paragraphs. I get the first paragraph. The second paragraph, I have a problem with. And I still question whether Lieutenant Woods, if we have a challenge about identifying one, one single individual that could represent the Veterans Home, then we shouldn't represent anybody. Or, I mean, I would have thought that Colonel Holderman would have been the iconic individual, being identified as such by his name being on the hospital. So the second and third paragraphs, I have a little more trouble with the content, and then how the photographs relate. Because I just don't, I don't see these images really representing the park. They represent the Veterans Home more than the park, to me. So that's my, those are my thoughts.
And I think, because it's a remainder parcel, I think it's going to be hard to have a picture that represents the park, because there was no developed Veterans Home use of that space.
Well, so, for example, maybe this doesn't exist. What I would have liked to have seen is an aerial image, whether it's an artist rendering or a real photograph, of the entire parcel, so you could see the relationship between the park and the home as it exists across the highway. People could say, oh, I see where, that's where the train tracks were, and that's where they moved the highway. And that's why this little segment is cut off and separated. Maybe that doesn't exist, but...
Don't know. We can take a look.
Well, it's actually a little more complicated, because that park, the, the back end of the, the park where the bocce courts are was not part of the original land. Part of the original, so the, in front of the bocce courts was actually two different parcels. And one of them was part of the original Veterans Home. The one closer to Washington Street was actually purchased by the Home Veterans Fund and then transferred in. So the whole, what we know now is the park has a bit of a multiple history to it. And it just gets complicated. There is nothing in here that's really inaccurate telling that story, because the piece of the park was part of the Veterans Home. To start dissecting which piece actually belonged, it gets overly complicated and cumbersome, and you get really lost in the, in the detail of it. So, and, you know, the Holderman, it's hard to put Holderman in here without getting into a Holderman story.
Well, we don't get into Lieutenant Colonel Woods's story either. But, so, here's what I'm going to propose and see how the council feels. I don't see any reason to rush this. I feel like there's, I am not satisfied that this is what I want to see as the panel that represents the park. And that park is far from finished. It won't take several months to make this panel. If we can get some preliminary direction on a preferred size, that's great. I would like to see a little bit more work done to vet the content and match up some images that might make sense to represent the park itself, and not just the history of the home that hasn't been heard from based on other stories about the home. So I don't think we have a tight deadline on this. I think to deal with it tonight, I'm not comfortable dealing with it as it's presented tonight.
I would say, you know, it's, the council's prerogative. I would ask for a little more specific direction.
Well, I'm asking the council for that direction.
No, I hear.
If I'm the only one that feels this way, then I can be outvoted, and we move forward.
The timing, what we were hoping to do, and you do have a little bit of time. I mean, you've asked us to bring it back. Our goal was to have this so it could be installed and ready when we reopen the park.
Of course. And that's what we will fully intend to do.
And that's why I'm saying, we, you know, we're trying to get your feedback so that we can go work. And, you know, this is, has been done by a, working on a committee. So what I would ask for is whatever direction you have to try to be as clear in what your expectations are so that we can work to create that. And certainly, we can work on graphics and... And certainly, we can work on graphics and pictures.
So, I've given some, I think, specific detailed direction on what I would like to see changed or added and subtracted. I'd like to hear from Councilmember Dornbecker. Councilmember Durham, any specifics? Or if you think this is ready to go, then you can feel like it's ready to go. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Okay. Well, I tend to disagree with you respectfully, Mr. Mayor, about the, I think that the original home of the Veterans Home is a compelling story and that beautiful old building is a beautiful, and it is the actual building that was the actual Veterans Home. And in my estimation, the renovation that we're doing for the park to make it the Yountville Veterans Memorial Park does benefit from having the actual first building, since we have a photo of it in, at the Veterans Home. And the first commandant was Lieutenant Colonel Enos Woods. I tend to think that a lot of people who come to visit, who aren't familiar with Holderman Hospital, which isn't really a hospital anymore anyway, wouldn't miss the fact that Colonel Holderman is not the one who is featured in this panel since this does tell the story of the very early part of the Veterans Home and we're trying to make that connection. So, to me, there's nothing about the narrative that I do not like and do not feel that is appropriate to carry through. Possibly. No, I think that it all does sort of explain how the park came to be. And I'm not really all that crazy about the railroad station photo in it. And, you know, I could live without that. But otherwise, I think it is a very cohesive story of the history, you know, the history and historic. That's how I feel.
Okay. Councilmember Durham?
So, going back to what I said originally, the railroad picture is just too big because your eyes, your eyes are drawn to it because it's the largest focus. Get rid of the picture of Enos. Get rid of one sentence, Lieutenant Colonel Woods was the first commandant. And you've got the full backstory and you've got the full story of the connection. And put an Old Town map with the Veterans Homes included in the picture in place of Lieutenant Colonel. And we're done with my thoughts.
Any follow-up thoughts, Vice Mayor?
Well, I personally kind of like the text. I think Commandant Woods is a grand old man and I just love that photo of him. I appreciate hearing the thoughts about having the map. But when you put these types of things together, you really need a photo that is very distinct and clear. And when you get into these maps, it loses the punch of somebody coming up and like, here's a, here's a panel, what's it got to say of, you know, the reader and telling them the story. The maps really, and a lot of what you read about the California landmarks and how to put these things together for the parks, the California Parks Department, they really kind of give you some warnings about not having a picture that's, that's too complicated, that's not clear, that's not kind of obvious what it is. So, and I just think that Colonel Commandant Woods is, you know, it just gives, it sets the stage for the age. You have several places where you have years, but when you look at that photo, it says the late 1800s to me. So, I agree with Councilmember Dornbecker. I like the text and I think it just really needs some massaging in terms of the placement of the photos and the placement of the text, something that's going to really work to draw somebody in when they, when they look at it. So, those are my thoughts.
I'll continue or I'll repeat. My, my direction is going to be that we bring this back to the committee and have them consider the thoughts that we've shared tonight and come back with a modification of the content and the layout, for sure. I just want to make one last statement about it is this is not a tribute to the Veterans Home alone. This is, this park is about veterans who are, have given the ultimate sacrifice for our nation and it's not just about the 1800s. We have veterans that are giving their lives today that should be represented in this park. And to only look at this as the historical background of the Veterans Home, I think, is missing the point. That's why we have interpretive panels on the main campus. That's why we have done what we've done to show and tell that story. I think this is a living memorial park to represent all generations, past and future. And I don't think that just telling the very original story of the late 1800s represents it the way I would like to see it represented. So, that's part of the reason that I would like to see this be changed and given back for further consideration by the committee that's been considering it. This, to me, just isn't a historical story about the Veterans Home. It's more than that. So, if my recommendation can be agreed upon by the council that we continue to look at the content and the layout and bring this back for future consideration, we have plenty of time. I mean, we're months away. Joe, what's our tentative, very tentative completion date on this park?
First week of January, Mayor Dunbar.
Okay. So, we have basically a month and a half, probably, maybe a month, given holidays. And this panel will probably take two to four weeks maximum to.
If you recall our 9/11.
Yeah. I was told originally that would be done in two weeks. It just, it didn't get fabricated until five days before the.
It does take some time. So, the sooner, the more time we have, the more likely we are to have it when we open the park.
We can decide this in our December meeting and we should be able to hit that target date. We're not going to open early.
That's correct. We're not going to open early.
I do think, Mayor, you introduced a new element that, from a staff perspective, this panel was always meant to talk about the relationship to the park and the Veterans Home. It wasn't meant to cover all veterans. So, if that's a new angle, we need to incorporate that. I'm just saying, that specifically was not, and that's why we have some other elements. I just want to say, for the group that was working on this, the focus was the synergy, because this goes in one small spot. There's multiple veteran themes. And I just want to say, for our standpoint, we want to make sure we're getting this right for you. So, the target that we were working off of was to tell the very unique story about the park property and the unique relationship. It was not meant, and we certainly have other areas in the park that we're trying to emphasize the role that all veterans have played. So, I just want to, if, but we can certainly add something to that, to the panel. But I just want to say, if that was your expectation, we didn't do that. That was not the direction that this group was working on.
Okay. I'm going to, I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion to accept this as presented, you're welcome to do it. I won't support that at this time. My, I'm going to repeat it again. My recommendation is this comes back to us at our December meeting for further discussion and consideration.
We're okay with that. I'm actually going to suggest that, I'm, I'm going to request that two of you join because in order for us to be expeditious and try to make the fabrication, the staff doesn't want to bring back something that we think meets with your all's expectations. I'd rather have, if there's two of you willing, perhaps the mayor and vice mayor can.
Well, since I'm the only one that's really raising a big stink about this, I mean, there are minor changes that I agree with also that have been mentioned, Councilmember Durham especially. I'm fine with that, but I still would like to see more come out of this panel.
I've heard, well, I'm just saying, we need to flush those out. I've also heard the vice mayor indicate some different graphics could be in order and layout. So, I don't, I'm just trying to say for us, we'd like to honor that. But I think, I'm just saying, you know, we can certainly make sure that everybody listens to your presentation, but, you know, I'm, we need, I think the one thing is, we need some clarity from the four of you as to, do you want this piece to be reflective of the historical relationship between the town, the park property, its dedication? Or do you want to include reference to all veterans and the sacrifice and the contributions that they've all made? Because like I say, that was deliberately not put into this panel. So, if we want to do that, we can add it. It just needs to be, you know, that's why I'm saying it'd be helpful.
So, I understand you, so, direction from Councilmember Durham. You talked about deleting a sentence and are you comfortable with it remaining a kind of origins of the Veterans Home?
If my understanding is correct, given what has been stated, that there are other elements in the park that honor the veterans in other ways, I like the historical element of this because, because of the connection from the Veterans Home to this park. So, yes.
Okay. And Councilmember Dornbecker, I believe you stated you like it as is.
Well, I, I do. However, when you talk about how bringing in up-to-date information, I could see that working so that it would say something like, and over the years, you know, veterans from each of the conflicts and naming those, those conflicts and things like that, that would bring it a little bit more contemporarily towards the end of the panel. Most of it I do like very much. I hadn't considered, I was looking at it also as just a historical piece of the very beginnings and how it came about that we have that park. But I could see that being stated in the panel as well. So, I'm comfortable with your and Councilmember Mueller's input to the, to the committee to get that figured out, how to say that. I'll just say that.
Are there, there are no other plans to have additional panels in the park, are there?
No. I want to remind everybody, we have inscriptions on the service and remembrance. I forget the exact language, so I don't want to quote.
Those are recognized in the various branches of military.
Right. And the members. And that's as you walk in. We have the flags. We also have the historical reference, not historical, I'm sorry, the patriotic banners. So, there's different elements. So, if you wanted a different panel to talk about individual, I'm just saying, the theme that you asked us to work on was the relationship between the home, the park and the town. And we have other elements.
And that's what we're still talking about.
Yep.
I'm just, I am, apparently, I didn't realize it was introducing a new idea, thought it was adding to what was going to be presented to us.
It's your call on that. And that's why I'm saying, we're just asking, there's a background to how, what is presented was before you. So, if you want to add that element, we certainly can do that.
Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I think it might be of interest to visitors to the park to learn that actually at the Veterans Home, there are 2,000 veterans from the Civil War buried there. I mean, there's all kinds of, I mean, just incorporating a little bit more information about what, what the Veterans Home still means to the town of Yountville and how many veterans of every conflict they have served. So, I can see that point.
Yeah. Councilmember Durham?
We need two panels. One is not going to work if we're going to go in this direction. So, we're not going to be able to do what we are discussing now on one panel. So, we either need to move forward with this and a second panel or just move forward with this if we're going to incorporate, which I fully understand your points. It's not, I don't agree with them. It's that we just need to agree that we need a second panel, figure out where to put it, and let's do it.
What are the council thoughts about that idea?
It's not all going to fit on this one.
Yeah. I agree.
It's going to have to be, it's going to have to be, you know, 18 by 105. So.
There are some guidelines with how many words and how many pictures and, you know, how long is somebody going to stand there and read this? So, you know.
And I'm not, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
So, no, so I totally agree. There is a whole lot of really cool stuff you could talk about. The history of the park, it used to be called Charles B.C. Park of C. S. Candy. He was the youngest brother of the guy who started the C. S. Candy. And he actually donated a lot of money. And this was originally called, you know, Charles B.C. Park. Where do you, you know, throw that out? I mean, there's, there's just a plethora of information that can, you can go on and on about. And I certainly can always go on and on about it because I find it all fascinating. But there's a point where you have to, here it is, here's the focus, here's kind of the maximum words that someone's probably going to stand there and read. And so, I'm fine with this being one panel. If you want to have a team write another panel for, that has a different point, then I'm fine with that. I think.
Joe, off the top of your head, do you think of a second and potentially even a third location? Or, I'm assuming that would be viable. We have, it doesn't have to all go into the north and renovated section.
No. I think that park lends itself to several locations, honestly, Mayor. I think even, even close to where it's going to, the first panels kind of tentatively plan for, would, another panel or two would fit nicely in there or we can scatter them around. I think that's a discussion we can have with the landscape architect and, and others if they want to weigh in on it. But certainly, there's plenty of room for that.
I think it's a good, a good idea to do additional panels. I agree. It's also challenging to put everything that is pertinent and valuable in a single panel. You know, you see a lot of areas where they have multiple panels and it creates a walking dynamic that already exists with our path that works there. So, one could be, I think this, this should clearly be identified as the history of veterans, the Veterans Home and Veterans Memorial Park. But there's more to the park. I think your point that you just made is a very good one about, most people don't know about that connection to the C. S. family. I think that's relevant to the park. So, I think there are a way, a couple other themes that we could add and have maybe three of these panels around. With that, I would do the smaller of the two options that we're looking at, 18 by 24. I would still go with the changes that were made that were, I think, Councilmember Durham recommended, removing the reference to Lieutenant Colonel Woods and his photo, either downsizing or eliminating altogether the railroad, the rail station image. If, you know, it sounds like the council likes the image of the original residence, then I think that needs to be identified either with an arrow or with its location in the layout or caption. And then if there, I still think an aerial map of some type of rendering, not only does that give some historical element to it, even if it's, you know, I have seen some maps of the home and renderings of when the original farmer veterans were working the grounds, that tells a story as well, better, I think, than, than the rail depot. So, I'd like to just kind of re, you know, comb back through some of the graphics that are available.
I think.
And keep this focused on, this could be the history and the connection to the Veterans Home itself.
Yeah. With that, the one edit, Lieutenant Colonel, are not. That's what you're recommending, Councilmember Durham, to delete that? All right. And then we'll add the history, smaller photo.
When you say we'll add the history, what do you mean?
History of Veterans Memorial Park. So, the title will be.
The title.
History of Veterans Memorial Park at the top. See where the slide says Veterans Memorial Park?
Yes.
So, it'll be History of Veterans Memorial Park. And then we will look at.
Sorry. And I'm sorry that we're wordsmithing this to death right here, but this is the first time we've had the opportunity to do it. It isn't the whole history. It's the origins. So, maybe we, I mean, that's my concern is that this isn't the only story about the park.
I agree. So, that's why we're trying to make sure it's reflective. So, if you like the word origins.
I really don't know if we have to wordsmith it right now.
We don't. But the problem I have is I'm trying to.
You have to go back to Salvador Vallejo, it was his land, if you want to go back.
I'm, no, I'm trying, I don't want, what I'm trying to do is, I think there's some consensus on the council in general, on the panel. So if we can work on that, the, you know, the origins, I'd also, and then I think the idea is, I hear smaller or different photo than the railroad and some type of historical map reference. So I think those are some things that I'm hearing consensus from everybody to go look on. What I'd also like is some idea of what would you like on the second and/or third panels?
Can that be a further discussion?
Yeah. I think having this as the, you know, this is the panel that needs to be there upon the opening of the park.
All right. So I think.
The other ones, if they're ready, great. If they're not ready.
Okay, I'm just trying to get some.
I don't want to put an artificial deadline and hurry this thing.
We're okay with that. So I'm just trying to make sure. Because you had mentioned, all right, so does that generally summarize the direction that we will take back to the committee?
We'll come back December 6th with a revised for hopeful approval.
I will probably try to have something to share with the two of you prior to that and working with the committee.
Right, I mean, this.
I don't think we need a committee. I think this is, I think what you've talked about the staff can do. I don't think we need a committee.
Well, I do agree, even though we have a ton of subcommittees, because the timing is, we have one more meeting after this, December 6th, that's our only chance as a council to approve it. If the entire council has to approve the exact content, or if the council is willing to leave it up to the ad hoc, the two of us and staff to come up with the final product and, and give us that authority now, then we don't have to bring it back December 6th.
Given, given the feedback that both Councilmember Durham Becker and myself have given, I am comfortable leaving it with Google definition with a synonym for origins and your directions.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, too. I don't think we need a.
I'm fine with that, too.
We don't need a committee.
And we'll, of course, share it with all the council.
Perfect.
But it won't be required to come back December 6th.
Okay.
Or we, and we don't need a committee. We can, this seems like the staff can deal with this.
Is that enough direction, Steve?
It is.
Okay. So that was nice and fluid and easy.
Actually, I just will point out, you know, sometimes you all, I know, can, can get frustrated, but you have to realize, we know that sometimes when you get these things, and it's hard for us to make sure, so I don't want anybody to feel bad about, because we're trying to make sure that we're reflecting on, in, in doing and getting, you know, and the four and what will be the five of you sometimes, you know, have the virgin and trying to make sure we got something.
This is a challenge also when we're handed something, when we sit down and we're, we're asked to evaluate it. That's what happens, we evaluate it.
Yep, exactly. So that's why I'm saying, from that perspective, it's, you know, especially, you know, we initially thought we would have all of the content, and we had layout, so we got feedback on content and layout.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the very thorough and candid discussion about it. I, it wasn't just 20 minutes, I'm sorry, audience, but we're now getting to the general plan update. See, general plan updates have a way of just taking time before and after. Here we go.
Good evening. We are excited to share with you some of the details of the launch of our general plan update. And as you know, the town's general plan was last updated in 1992, which makes it 24 years old, and that is considered old for a general plan. OPR recommends updating it, or at least looking at it every five years. And while that isn't realistic, communities do need to check in to see if the general plan still establishes the policies and the direction for the town. A lot has happened in town since 1992, a lot of the big commercial developments, a lot of the residential neighborhoods. This town has changed, and yet I still continue to hear from residents how much they like some of those original general plan policies on the small town character of Yountville. So it's a chance for the community to get together and voice their opinion as to what Yountville is and where it would like to go. So as you know, the, two of our first consultants were on tonight's consent calendar, one of whom we're very excited about, it's Christine O'Rourke. And it was noted that she worked on the climate action plan, and she worked with the, the Go Green Committee, she held the workshop, and then she developed these policies that were very responsive to concerns she heard and unique to Yountville, and we love that about her. She's working on the Nevada general plan update now, and that document has the same quality, and it's very readable. So we are thrilled that she'll be part of the general plan update. We've also selected WRT to work on a workbook early on, and that workbook will establish existing conditions for the town, what's changed since 92, what Yountville is. And it's a good point of reference in, in considering policies as we move forward. They'll start work on that early on, and then they will incorporate some of that into the final document, but do a lot of the, the graphics and the mapping and, and put it together in a way that people will want to pick it up and read it. And we feel that's very important because general plans can be entirely the opposite. So we have those two parties in place. On Thursday, we're interviewing three environmental firms that would do early technical studies and then would start drafting the EIR once the draft general plan is prepared, so that's toward the end of the process. But their early involvement keeps things running smoothly. We're also interviewing two public outreach firms, and it's important that we keep that element separate from the party that's drafting or the party that's managing, because we want the public to know that we're listening, that we are not bringing a final document to the, to the council for approval at some point, but that everybody has a chance to be heard. So we're separating that out. So those are the big players that we'll be working with. We're also, we also have an RGS employee that will be serving as the project manager, and that's so important because we are a small and lean organization. This is going to take a lot of time, especially since we've decided to take the route of assembling a team of experts rather than going to a larger firm that could do it all for a huge price tag, but arguably for an, for a document that wouldn't be uniquely Yountville, which is what we want. I mentioned earlier tonight that by having all those different elements, we're hoping to keep the project on time. People's work can be overlapping, and our goal is to do this within an 18-month timeframe that roughly, within a year or two, will start developing the draft document for public hearing or review. So in January, we believe that we'll have the official launch of this, and we want to get notice and information out in the paper that this project is coming. Some of the first elements will be what we envision as a speaker series from February through May, and we've reserved the council chamber, I mean, I'm sorry, the Heritage Room at Community Center on a couple occasions. And we'll have topics that aren't titled general plan, but we're going to try to present them in a more exciting manner to really get diverse and active input and involvement from the community. We want to, the speaker series will be anything from what is a general plan, why do we need it, what's the 92 general plan, where can we go from here, something on the ag preserve and why is that so important in shaping the town's boundary and its uses, looking at the development potential of the town, that's one of the big parts of a general plan, and we're a built-out community, so what does that mean? Where does this community think we're going, where are we going? And then issues such as our historical resources, our art walk, sustainability, and, and what role all those ideas are going to have moving forward. The general plan speaker series is also envisioned as a process to see the community become involved and then ultimately select members for, say, an approximately 15-member steering committee that will work with Christine O'Rourke and the other consultants to develop the policy that will come back before you. So that's it in a nutshell. There's a lot going on, but we're excited to, to jump in and get started.
Two questions I'll ask. One, as was asked earlier tonight, about the overall budget and where we stand with our existing roughly $600,000 that have, has been put in a restricted budget line item. The other thing is, where can people follow this process? How are we going to be presenting it in terms of its own link on our town page?
Okay.
If you could share that.
So as to the budget, we believe we're at about 450 or 500 of the 600,000 this first year. It's going to bleed into a second year since it's an 18-month process, and we think it may have a budget of around 850,000.
Total.
Total.
When we're all finished in 18 months.
Total, yes.
And you were pointing out that that's not a change from what we initially shared with you all when we started.
We, we set the 600 up as a starting point to get money protected and reserved, and we knew full well that this budget cycle, we would be looking at adding additional funds to it.
But we're looking, I would say, 2 to 250 will be added in next year, and with no significant budget items, we're probably looking at a slight overall decrease in overall expenditures as we move into the budget.
And then the other question about where could people follow the process and how are we going to present it on our website and potentially anywhere else?
So what we envision is setting up a specific webpage for the general plan itself. On that webpage, we'll have links to all of the speaker series, we'll have monthly surveys, we'll, it will be a compilation of all the documents and information associated with that. We'll have a link from our town webpage to this webpage, and we'll also use items like Speak Up and Next Door and all sorts of different media outreach type things. We'll really look to our public outreach consultant to help us develop the best package of getting the word out there, and they're experts, so we definitely need their help.
We'll also be partnering with Channel 28 to televise, not live, but all of the speaker series and workshops so that people will be able to go back that weren't able to watch them and at least get a feel for what the, the information and content was.
And are we going to have a dedicated email for people that either have ideas, questions, comments, as the process goes along without just the speaker slash public meetings? Or how are we handling that part?
If, if I could, there's a few details that we will be working on and bringing back once we've actually met and retained the consultant. But what we do anticipate is that there will be a identifiable source, so that if somebody wants to follow the general plan, send us feedback, there's going to be a registration format so that they can get on board, that they can share comments, that people can see their comments. So we're working on some things on a really, we've got some ideas that we're really trying to make sure it's out there. But we also want the public to see, so you know, if, if somebody's going to have to register to participate, post their dialogue, similar to some of the roundtables where, you know, you post your ideas and then people can see something, respond. So we have a whole variety of things out there that we anticipate the community outreach consultant will be helping us to package. But yes, one of them will be, here's a dedicated place to go put the information and the content, and people will be able to see it, react to it. Because in some cases, especially in the early processes, it's really important that people share their ideas and go, no, that's really cool, yes, oh, what about this? So you know, that, that type of give and take in the dialogue needs to occur, and people need to see that. So we're excited about that.
And we, sorry, we, we all get contacted directly, sometimes all of us together, sometimes individually, and we all forward it to Sandra, to Steve, whatever, so we can kind of eliminate some of the steps in that process if we have a dedicated location.
There will be a spot, and like I say, and we're still, I mean, I don't, we don't want to give a specific as to what that all looks like yet, because that, that consultant's going to help us shape all of that. But it's certainly something, and we know that we need to be able to, you know, we need to do and use social media and outreach to residents, because we both have a senior resident, a veterans home resident, a second homeownership, a business ownership group. All of those have a role, and their, their voices need to be heard and put into whatever we're developing in that. So there'll be lots of opportunities to participate, and like I say, we are getting kind of nerdy, but I, we think it's going to be an interesting process.
And I think, Sandra, you touched on one of the critical first steps is explaining to people why we're doing it. I know some people feel like it's a frivolous waste of money, you know, you're going to follow or not follow, why are we even putting a plan together? I think it's going to be really important identifying some of the state or federal funding requirements to comply and, and some of the things like that. They're not just, we're doing it because we feel like it. That there are some requirements that this happened.
Yes.
Explaining the different elements that are a part of it and how they're all being evaluated, how we're certified in some of them and others need updating, just some of the real.
You, you bring up a really good point.
Fundamental things.
I, I will say, I doubt we can get our next housing element certified without an update to our general plan, because if you may recall, we shared with you, we got a little done letter from HCD on how old our general plan is.
But we have to explain why it matters that there is a housing element that's certified, for example, those things. So we made you sit through more than 20 minutes. If you'd like to either ask additional questions or comments, or if you've been, you've heard the answers you were looking for, that's, that's fine. Eric, if, I don't know if you had anything, or you were just so engaged that, okay?
It's a process completed. I think it's a living document that's designed to inform, to inform you and future council members.
Yep.
It's a process we have to go through.
Right, okay. Thank you. So any additional questions?
Oh, now? Never when I first asked, Billy. Always after I'm about to start something else. You're still welcome, though, to come on up.
For the moment, for the moment.
I'll wait.
For the record, for the record, Billy Hewitt, Nine Landi Way. I sincerely ask this question. How is this going to improve the life of Yountville? I mean, it's sort of an innocent question, but I think other people will ask also. Is this going to improve the, the life we live? Is it going to address problems that we see in town? Is it going to make life better?
I will, I'll start. I'm going to start with that one.
Those are just general, it's just thoughts that I've.
First of all, that's a very open-ended and subjective question about improvement or good or better. So I'll just say that. Of course, our intentions always are to enhance, and if things are needing improvement, the question is, you may say something needs improvement, somebody else might say, this is fabulous the way it is. So it all depends on how much public engagement there is, frankly. If a lot of people are involved and bring their, their likes and dislikes, it's a more robust conversation, we can get a better outcome. If, if nobody shows up to the meetings and it's left to staff and the council, then the public is putting themselves in a position where they're going to receive guidance based on this general plan that didn't include them, because they chose not to be included. So.
Right. That's.
You, that's great. I mean, that's, I'm just kind of giving that, that guidance early on, that if people are concerned, why does it matter? Why are we doing it? Will it improve my life and my block? Then come and participate and hear why it's important that we do it, and it's important that you're part of the conversation going forward. So if you want to add to that, Sandra?
Well, I think it's a tough question, but I wanted to give just one example, and that's of noise in our community. And the environmental consultant will do, do noise contours, and we'll hear from the public whether the introduction of wine bottles and hotel noise is an issue. And then when it comes to development projects, then we under, better understand those impacts. So that's just a tiny example, but noise is something that is different today than it was in 92.
Right, right. And that's, I mean, I, I agree, you know, people have to come and people have to hear, and people have to, to give their.
What could, can I add?
Their ideas.
Steve, Steve is ready, and then Vice Mayor.
To expand upon that, the general plan informs significant policy decisions and actions that the community will take going forward. So it's important to understand that, because it will inform future councils, it will provide guidance and direction. For example, there's a lot of things people will say that's worked very well out of the 1992 general plan, and we want to look at what were those that were successful. I'll use a good example in this. We never anticipated winery tasting rooms in 1992 being a part of the retail footprint, and we've had to modify some of our policies and land use practices, such as our retail diversity ordinance in response. So I do think it's important to realize communities evolve. The people that are living here at this date and time may have some different perspectives than the community members that did in 1992. That doesn't make it right, wrong, or different, but the, the focus now is to develop a general plan that's appropriate for this community moving forward. And I think, you know, for us, there's a unique challenge that we talk about generally, our built-out environment. You know, there are a lot of things that a community can choose to do. In state law, one of the areas in planning that we have to do is we actually have to have a general plan and certain core elements in order to be, and people argue, well, you, you know, you choose to do that. Well, the consequences are no. If you don't, there are actually some consequences not having. So I, I think for us, it's.
So I think for us, it's, it's, you know, it's doing the right thing, and it's, unfortunately, it's a very involved process. There's a lot of public meeting and input and data consultation, and that's where the expense occurs. And we have to check in to make sure that that's reflective of what the community is looking for, or if there's some discussion, how do we, how do we put it? So I mean, to me, the biggest thing is, it's going to inform decisions that are going to be made, and those will all have a daily, a daily impact on the lives of the people that live in this community.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I mean.
And Billy, I don't know if you wanted to sit down, or if you wanted to stay up here.
Well, I just wanted to make another comment before, I mean, these were just general questions that I think just about anybody would ask. I would, I'd like to commend you for your comments, that it will be distinctive to Yountville instead of a template sort of thing. And I know Christine will, I mean, having worked with her on the Go Green team, you know, I know it will be specific to Yountville from her. I hope the other consultants will not put a template on and say, this goes in Nevada, so we can do it in Yountville. I mean, I think it's a special place and deserves a special consultant, I think.
Trust us on that one. We all agree.
Thank you for all your answers.
So while you're sitting down, Vice Mayor, you wanted to.
Well, I think what this conversation really says to me pretty loud and clear is that we have to be, have probably the most critical part, well, there'll be many critical parts, but the first critical part is really telling people what this general plan is and what it isn't supposed to be, because I don't think that we'll probably, maybe Eric might be there, and he was, were you here for the last general plan? I don't even know, but I would fathom that firstly, nobody will have, who's going to participate, will have been here for 92 to really understand it. It's not something that we've even gone through in the last 25 years. And to really have a very clear definition of what we're really doing, what this is all about, and how it fits into the big cog in the world, I think is critical, because it really is a list of policies. And it's a list of policies that will tell you how it's going to benefit you, is you're going to know in the future that you're not going to have a four-story apartment building next to you, or you are. Those are the types of policies that it will, you know, contain in there. So I think whoever you have for that introductory, telling everybody who shows up what this is and what it isn't, I think is really going to be important, because I can see there's a lot of people touching the elephant in a different way.
I think you're going to get an email from Stephen Pat Bartisano tomorrow about who's around that was here in 92.
Well, I'm not saying there was nobody, but I would say the vast majority of people that will come will have not participated.
I'll offer some very real examples also, Billy, to your, your question about how does this impact your and our quality of life? We have a 30-foot height limit for buildings. That could change if somebody, you know, if the policy were to change to say 50 feet is okay, then that's going to be very impactful on our view corridors. So that's something that we probably want to protect. Setbacks for homes. Some communities, you can build to the edge of your lot, and those monster homes, then you can have a conversation from window to window with your neighbor. You know, that's a protection that we have had and have found valuable over the years. Those are the kind of things that we're evaluating and saying, yes, these all still make sense for our community, and, you know, like you say, a boilerplate consultant might say, you're missing some opportunities. You could build taller buildings and, and get more retail space, but that's, we've chosen not to go that direction. Will it always be unanimous? No, because we have, in our old general plan, some roads that are dead-end roads today that in the general plan said those should go through to add traffic flow for vehicles. The folks on those streets don't want to see those streets go through today, so we're going to look at that. And should they come out of the plan and be left alone, or should something change? So, you know, heritage oak tree protection, do we want to continue to value historic oak trees? That's part of the element. So these are very real things that you'll be hearing about from our consultants, as they say, when we're talking about the housing element, these are some of the things that matter about the housing element, and some of the, the noise ordinance and water use and all these things that are very real. You may not realize that's what we're talking about, and that's our job, you just mentioned, is to get the message out about what it is we're talking about and why are we doing it? So some of the most fundamental things that we have in Yountville that we cherish and love so much are based on that general plan from 25 years ago. So we're going to continue that effort. Councilor Doran Becker?
I look at it as sort of our foundation, but it is a living document, because things have changed. We never did imagine that we would have, instead of antique stores on every corner, we would have tasting rooms. So there are a lot of, you know, protections that we want to look, look at where we are, where we stand, get that really codified, and then look out into the future and think, what are the things that we can live with, and what are the things that we absolutely not? So I, I agree with Mr. Knight. It's a living document in that, as we have gotten more sophisticated, someone said earlier, we, we need to relook at that and make sure that where we are today is where we are going to either allow the town to go in the future or restrict the town from going too far.
Any last thoughts from the council? Sandra, thank you very much. The work is only beginning.
Yes, it's going to be fun.
Thanks for both of you with your comments.
Yes, always.
All three of you, actually. Okay, capital improvement. Speaking of some of the ways that we continue to keep the quality of life at a high level, capital improvement program update.
That is a great segue, and I'm happy tonight to be able to talk about our capital improvement program. We're about four, almost five months into the fiscal year, and out of the 37 projects that we had on our list, we, 30 are underway or are complete. We had about $1.7 million in capital projects on this year's list, so it wasn't, it's not a small or unsubstantial list. It is definitely, as we all know, a little bit less than we spent in the last couple of years, but it's still a very robust plan. So we'll take you through a few of the key projects we have this evening. Let me see if this works. Hey, it does. So civic facilities. Out of the five projects on this list, two are, at the bottom, are actually replacement or reserve funds. So the finance director and I have been discussing, along with our town manager, how to make that a real pot of money and a, and a true reserve fund, and we will continue to work on that, and hopefully in the next fiscal year, have an actual plan to create those reserve funds and be able to draw from those to, to fund these projects in the future. So community center trash enclosure, that is under design. What you see in front of you is not the design, but it is very close to what the design will look like. We do have an artist's rendering and a preliminary design that was delivered last week, so we are looking forward to bringing that to you in the new year, or maybe slightly before that. So we're working very hard to get that done. Town Hall Council Chambers Technology, so the $5,000 that we had programmed for this year is to help us find the consultants and design professionals that we are going to need to improve the technology and the, and the functionality of this room. We've had several meetings, and we think we're on a very good path to, to actually making some really nice improvements that will help both with the visual aids and with the audio and visual, and maybe even some, some additional improvements to, to how this part of the room functions. So we're, we're excited about what that's going to be, and we'll continue to update you as that plan evolves. The Town Hall HVAC, our planning director is going to be off for a couple of weeks around Thanksgiving, and since the HVAC unit is in her office, we have planned to replace that unit when she is gone, so starting next week, that will go under construction, and when she returns, we will have a brand-new heater and air conditioning unit. So that is, is going to be much needed and well-received, and I'm sure the planning director is glad that we're not doing it while she's trying to work.
Sandra, does that qualify as a work trip, then, for you to leave for two weeks like that?
Should, huh?
Community projects, so of the nine items on the community projects list, all of them are in some, in some form or function under construction or complete. The GIS mapping improvements, we continue to work with Rancho Cucamonga. The majority of this budget is going to be used for our SLA Asset Management Program, trying to get those two programs to talk with each other and share information, so that's what the main focus has been on. However, we continue to improve our own delivery and the app, our app with the Myville app and some of the other improvements that we, as a staff, are able to use with the mapping system. Yountville Park parking improvements, our town manager is working with, with one of the businesses here in town to actually make an improvement at the North Yountville Park, so that piece of the budget may be available for other uses. Community Wi-Fi hotspot, the town manager and myself have been working with a vendor to provide Wi-Fi in the commercial area and, and some of the areas along Yount Street. It's very preliminary right now, but it looks like we may have something to report here in the very near future on, on our Wi-Fi. And it's, the technology is getting so sophisticated that the antennas and the, and some of the infrastructure that we're used to seeing is, is kind of getting to the point where you, you won't even notice, in some cases, what the improvements are and the functionality that they're going to include with, with the addition of that technology. So definitely going to be bringing that to you all at some point in the not-too-near future, I hope. Community Hall fire and smoke detection is done. So Samantha Holland and her staff got right, right started right away in July and, and did that work at the community hall, and some in the community center, happy to report that that project is complete. They're putting the final touches on it in the last week or so. The items below the line are, are items that we've been working on and are in work. It's, it's kind of an annual program, the top two, CP 2017 and CP 3017, and the vehicle and major equipment replacement is a reserve fund. The pavement treatment was, we, we performed some pavement treatment in the back lot that we share with the school. We thoroughly sealed that and then restripped it, so that's typical of the pavement treatment program that we use, and that will prolong the life of that parking lot for, for a few more years, which is an important part of our pavement maintenance. Drainage and flood control, Washington Street drainage, so that's on Pedronee. We do have some puddling there. We discussed that when, when we talked about the CIP program, both in February or March, and again in May. We're working on that. It's going to, it's not clear yet how we're going to resolve that problem, but it is under, under design and somewhat looking at the issue right now. Drain outlets for full trash capture, that is also developing. We've been working with the county flood control, their stormwater program. We recently got some reports back and have been in discussions with their consultants. We are under a new stormwater management plan, phase two of the, of the Bay Area stormwater The work we do here in town is evident to most of us, and for those of you who drive around in other communities and notice the trash that accumulates in various areas, we just don't have that in Yountville. It's not by accident, it's because we have trash cans and recycled cans, and we sweep on a more regular basis than most areas, but it's also because we don't have some of the other fast food businesses that create some of that trash. So we may be able to save a significant amount of this $15,000 that had been programmed for the next 10 years, because our condition of our streets and the, and the way we manage our trash allows us to, to avoid some of the, the capital improvements that other cities and towns are going to have to do in this valley in the next 10 years to meet that new requirement. Town Law Drainage and Erosion Program, that's ongoing. We are working with the county. Last year, you all approved the MOU that we have with the county. They're able to get the permits from flood control and the other permitting agencies that allow them to work in the creeks and drainage channels. Again, we're probably not going to use all of this funding. The county is a much more efficient and effective group, and, and we're not paying the overhead. They're, they don't have the profit margin, so it's a, it's a win-win for all of us. It keeps them busy and provides the services that we're using at a much lower cost. Parks and Recreation, all of the projects on this list are under construction or have been done, except vandalier fencing. So we expect to have a couple of choices for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee in January. Once they make that decision, we're going to try and move forward with, with a fencing choice or, or not, or one of the options we're going to offer is maybe no fencing. So we have heard from many members of that committee and a few members of the town, and so we're going to bring a few different choices and see what they choose, and we're going to go from there. The park restroom floors, many of you may have noticed that Vineyard Park had some restrooms out there today. That was a part of that restroom floor remodel, so what we're trying to do is preserve that flooring, give it a better, a non-slip flooring, and something that's more easy for us to maintain. Of course, we've all been talking about the Veteran Memorial Park. That is under construction. The picture that you see here is one I took last week. The contractor, despite the rain, has been able to prepare his site in such a way that he's been able to work through the rain that we've had on and off. He doesn't work during the rainy days, but he's fixed it up so that it drains pretty well, and he's, he's able to get something done. And this week, he's putting down gravel, so after this week, I don't think the rain's going to stop him much at all. He'll be able to, to do some work in the rain, set forms and that kind of thing, and then when it's not raining, they'll be able to pour concrete. We expect him to start pouring footings and some samples of, of the finished surface next week. So it's moving right along. Samantha Holland, again, got busy ride in July and negotiated with one of the car manufacturers, the dealer, and bought a SUV that is a hybrid model, so I'm happy to say that she got the vehicle she needed, and we got it for the budget price that we had. So we were both happy with that, and the finance director was happy as well. The bottom three items are all, again, reserve fund items that we're hoping to establish that pot of money and then be able to draw from that in future years to fund these projects that you're seeing on our list. Streets and Transportation. Survey Monuments Book, we talked about that in some detail at the last meeting. Happy to say that that survey and monument book is now complete. Some of the work that we still will continue to fund under this, this number is some of the lot line adjustments and surveys that we need to do as a public agency, both to help with the planning and development side of our business, but also to, to comply with some of the regulatory requirements that we have as a, a public agency. Hopper Creek Bridge Rail, Barrier Rail, that is in design. Probably January will come to you, or maybe February will come to you with the design and ask for your permission to go and go out to bid on that. We hope to get that under construction in the spring. Yountville's Crossroads is under reconstruction. If we can get a little weather window, we will get it paved. The contractor has about six days left on that project, and that's about what they need to finish the work. So we're looking for a six-day window that's clear and dry, and once we get that, they'll be out getting that work done. Traffic calming and streetlight replacement are ongoing. One of the traffic calming devices that we're going to use is some kind of a speed table or a speed bump as you enter town on Fennel. People have asked us if there's a way we can help kind of slow traffic down, so we're going to try to use that device to see how it works in Fennel, and, and we'll go from there, but that is one of the speed, the traffic calming measures we're going to use. Water Distribution, Yountville Crossroads, that water main is replaced, all the service laterals are also replaced, so that should be good for the next 25 to 50 years. Water Distribution, the improvements to the blow-offs, that's going to go in the winter and spring. And water meter replacements, that's ongoing right now. We're actually using part of that money to replace the meters. We're also using it to upgrade the meter reading technology that we've been talking about since early this year. We're having some challenges with the software implementation, but we're working towards a finished state of that, and in the next several months, we'll come forward with an informational. informational detail on how people can actually access their own water usage and set limits, and it's a very intuitive and sophisticated system that everybody's gonna be able to use to access their own water usage. The main and service lateral replacement fund for this year was used to help us with the Yountville Crossroads water main replacement. Finally, water and wastewater. The top two items on this list are items that our permit negotiations require us to fund. The very top item, we will use that for a variety of repairs for both the inflow and infiltration, mostly in manhole rehabilitation and some other areas that we have identified for repair. The sewer main replacement, we actually did a significant project out behind the Washington Park neighborhood on our A-line that runs alongside Beard Ditch. We installed a manhole and lined a large segment, a long segment of that line. It had developed some root problems from the trees. We removed the tree, installed a manhole where we needed one. So that's the kind of work that we do with the wastewater program. We're lucky enough to have the funds to be able to perform repairs that will stop those problems from occurring in the future and provide a repair that's gonna last for 25 to 50 years so that we won't continue to have that same issue or the same cost with trying to manage those issues. So the bottom two items on that list are the reserve funds that we're going to use to create that pot of money and draw from when we have these projects in years to come. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on any of our CIP projects for this year or any of the future years.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
No.
One question I had caught my attention after the $85,000 trash receptacle was the $5,000 for technology in this room. How are we gonna fix the issues that we have in here for $5,000?
So as I mentioned and maybe skipped over it a little too quickly, that $5,000 is for the planning phase of the project. So that's to hire some design professionals to help us do the work in front of the CIP project, which is on our list for next year for $35,000. So this is a two-year project.
Also, I would-
From a fiscal standpoint.
Correct. And what I would also point out is, once we have a game plan that we understand, we also will come back. A good portion of the modifications, especially as it relates to the broadcast and distribution of our public meetings, we can use our restricted public education, PEG funds, and we have about $45,000, $49,000. So we do have a funding source for a good chunk of that. So we're pretty confident, but the goal is to make sure we know what we're doing before we go do it.
Yeah, and I would encourage that you ask us some questions about what's working and not working, because it's literally from our perspective sometimes.
Absolutely.
When I go, tell you what, NVTA is going through a much more significant redesign and rebuild of their almost new building, because I don't know whom they discussed it with, but they certainly didn't talk to board members about that space. And you can't see anything from the dais, basically. So it's just some of the issues that we might have-
The chairs are so dangerous, you're just about-
Well, you put slick, rolling chairs on concrete that is angled toward the walls, and it looks like we're Dr. Evil rolling out of the room, you know? That's just one of a long list. So sometimes the operational stuff, from one perspective, and, you know, the county, the county supervisor's office was that way until they renovated, you couldn't see things from the dais. And so, yes, it's important for the viewing public to see it, but it's also important that the decision-makers are being able to see it. So sometimes it's not totally intuitive, so maybe just let us know at some point in the process and say, hey, does this sound like it's gonna make things better?
Duly noted, and we definitely have some plans to improve some of the functionality on your dais, but we will definitely contact you all and get solicit your advice. The town clerk and our management analyst and myself have done a field trip to look at several facilities, including NVTA and other agencies that are in the local area. We have talked with the public television provider, and so they, he, that person has done several of the remodels and the upgrades that you've just discussed. So we think we have a good group of professionals helping us, and we will definitely solicit your advice and your concerns before we go and start into real construction or design.
Thank you.
You bet.
No other questions? Thank you for the update. And it's always interesting to talk about flood control and drainage control, and it doesn't rain, but that's when you need to do it.
Absolutely.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other updates? Seeing none, let's go to meeting reports. Very quickly, Napa County Flood Control was very brief. We received and accepted a schedule for our 2017 meetings and heard that while the Napa River dredging was delayed, it was expected to get started and move forward quickly, so that was a good thing. Other meeting reports?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Yes, on November the 3rd, I attended a workshop from the Watershed Information and Conservation Council in which we were presented with the groundwater basin analysis report, which is going to be presented to the Board of Supervisors. And it was quite lengthy. One of the good news is that the groundwater basin in the Napa County has been measured over decades, and over decades it has been the same. Although it's shallow, there is water, groundwater in the basin. There were worries that because they do not measure up in the hillsides, that they might be missing something that is important. And this is all because the state is requiring a comprehensive plan from each county. And what the county is hoping to do is, because a lot of the work that goes into this report has already been done in pieces, and they're assembling the pieces, they would like to propose it as an alternate to the actual plan that the state wants. And there is some pushback against that. But on the other hand, there is comment available at the Board of Supervisors meeting on December the 13th. People are welcome to come and make comments at that meeting. Then on November 8th through, excuse me, 9th through the 11th, I attended the League Leaders Meeting of the League of California Cities in Southern California, and we worked nonstop, really, to come up with the strategic goals for the next year for the league to pursue on behalf of the cities. And the three top strategic goals, and everyone, it was really too early for everyone there to react to the results of the federal election. But these are the strategic goals that were chosen by the participants of all the cities who were participating, voted on these. And one is to increase funding for critical transportation and water infrastructure, which is actually the same goal as we had for last year, and some things have been done towards that, but there's a lot more to be done. To develop a realistic response to the homeless crisis, that is also a holdover from last year. It almost didn't make it onto this list, but because of the North Bay Division, Curtis Hunt was able to convince the general session as we voted that it was important to put that back on the list. The third is to improve the affordability of workforce housing and secure additional funds for affordable housing. We can hope that we can make something, they can make something happen there. And finally, it's to address public safety impacts of reduced sentencing laws, protect local priorities in the implementation of AUMA, and preserve the city rights to deliver emergency medical services. So those are the top three.
Top four.
Excuse me. The top four strategic goals for the League of California Cities. And in January, they'll have the new mayors and council members academy and also the beginning of the policy committee meetings, and we'll be moving forward next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other meetings to report on?
Some other quick reports and announcements. The Little Hoover Commission, which is a governor, basically a governor's advisory and oversight commission, will be coming to the Veterans Home on Thursday. It's basically a closed meeting of some executives from the state and local jurisdictions. I will be attending that meeting, representing the town, and be having dialogue with Secretary Mbassiani from Sacramento, some of his other deputy secretaries, and other stakeholders in the home as the Little Hoover Commission comes back to do an evaluation of the home. Also, on Thursday, it's gonna be a busy meeting day. The Napa Unified School District is meeting again. The Board of Directors is meeting again, Board of Trustees, Thursday evening as a continuation of the November 3rd meeting where they were discussing future plans for Stonebridge Elementary and how those plans may or may not relate to Yountville Elementary School. Hopefully, what they committed to on November 3rd, and some of the parents from Yountville and myself basically wouldn't leave the work session with them until they admitted that Yountville was not going to be kind of what I called in play in order to find a solution for Stonebridge Elementary. So we got that commitment from them, but we're not sure how it's going to stick, so that's why we're gonna go back on Thursday and make sure it does stick. They're looking at other options for Stonebridge Elementary. They have some safety concerns and may be looking to relocate that campus from Carneros. Festival of Lights coming up, since we are not going to meet again 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Friday, November 25th, the day after Thanksgiving. There's some great new additions and some adjustments to the program that Whitney Diver McAvoy from our chamber has put together, so that should be a very fun evening. And it will culminate, as it always does, with the lighting of the town when we turn into a living snow globe here in Yountville. I want to commend everyone, again, including the chamber, on the Yountville Celebrity Chef's Luncheon at the Veterans Home on November 9th, last Wednesday. Again, it's always very heartening to see how many volunteers come out from the community. Our staff was there, many folks from Yountville, some from outside of Yountville, were there to give honor and recognition and support to our veterans' residents. And we had, led by Chef Bob Hurley, as he does every year, a great lineup of chefs from town that served an amazing four-course meal prior to Veterans Day, which was on November 11th. I again attended ceremonies up at the home, started by the Roots of Peace Organization at the Memorial Grove, where their efforts were recognized. Also, incoming council member Carrie Dorman was at the Armistice Toast with me and many others. Again, members of the Calvet community were present to recognize the Armistice Toast at 11:11 a.m. on 11/11. Thanks again to all the volunteers and the folks from the Napa Valley Film Festival that made this sixth year, I think, a real wonderful success. Both our community center and the Lincoln Theater were screening venues here in Yountville. The pavilion in front of our community center was a wine pavilion, or the plaza was a wine pavilion, so there was a lot of good energy and buzz. I don't mean that literally, maybe figuratively and literally, there was a buzz in the crowd there throughout the week. Some pretty impressive Hollywood celebrities were part of that experience as well. And on that note of special events in Yountville, Yountville Live coming up in March of next year, March 16th through the 19th. The website is about to launch. It was potentially launching today, might be tomorrow, based on a couple of last-minute issues, but tickets are going to be going on sale through that website. Some of the chefs and musical artists have been identified. Some are still to be identified, but it looks like a very promising and exciting lineup coming up for Yountville Live next March. I believe we have a community Thanksgiving meal that's happening at the community center. I don't have the exact times for that. I'm sure-
The seatings are 1:00 and 2:30.
1:00 and 2:30, thank you. So that'll be coming up next week, and that's all I have for reports and announcements. Any other reports or announcements from the council? Other than we all collectively say have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Wonderful.
We don't have any closed session, and so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until our next meeting Tuesday, December 6th.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again. Happy Thanksgiving next week. And-